Would you like to offer an invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance, please.
All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and excuse, excuse the poor decorum by Councilmember Toy waving an unofficial flag. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kathy White. Welcome to the March 22 study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,918th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, April 12, 2021. We have all members of the council with us this evening. The announcement that I have to make, and I would like to ask either Paul Burnier or Councilmember Toy to update us on the late breaking news that we just heard, for the benefit of everyone who's been sticking with us and not able to turn on the TV or the radio. Councilmember Toy, would you like to announce this?
Right here, baby!
All right, we'll let Councilmember Toy hold the flag. And, uh, Bernie Burnier, would you like to give us the, uh, the outcome of the game that just finished?
Well, I think, I think Councilmember Toy just did. It was just won the games, I think it was 78 to 65.
All right. So go, go blue, right? Continue spending the state well and proudly. All right, does anyone else from the council have any name they'd like to make? Councilmember Toy, you've already used up your share. In all seriousness, does anybody have any announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Opportunity, if the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Calling once, calling twice, final call for audience communication. Seeing none, we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. Tonight's meeting, or this meeting is a study meeting, there will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and placed on file for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, March, that would not be March 22nd, because that's tonight, I believe it's the regular, of April 12, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate, any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise your hand button or press star nine on your phone when the item is called, and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. After the item is presented, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will generally make, will generally make initial presentate, will generally make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called to speak, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for this meeting. It will also let the council and those watching at home know who is speaking to them. And with that, we will commence with our agenda, beginning with item number one of new business. This is the reappointment of Glenn Long Jr. to the Local Officers Compensation Commission. This comes to us from the office of the mayor for a seven-year term to expire on April 2, 2028. LaShawn.
Hi, good evening, council. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Glenn Long Jr., as he is no stranger to our community. He is currently both the chairman of the Local Officers Compensation Commission and vice chairman of the Planning Commission. He has also served as president of Livonia Civic Arenas and held numerous positions within the Livonia Hockey Association. Mr. Long works as the Chief Financial Officer, EVP Administration, for the Detroit Economic Growth Corporation, an organization he has been with for nearly 30 years. He received a BA in accounting from Michigan State University, go Green, and an MBA from Wayne State University. On behalf of the mayor's office, thank you for considering this reappointment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. We appreciate that. Council, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to offer an approving for consent. I think Ms. Thomas left off the most important qualification, that he is a Catholic Central graduate. So, he obviously has served our community quite well over the years, and we're happy to have him. Thank you, sir.
All right, that'll be placed on the consent agenda. And just to remind those following along at home, the consent agenda is, are items that are determined not to be controversial in the study meeting are put on the consent agenda, where at the regular meeting they're voted on as one single item. All right, thank you, Mr. Jolly. Item number two is an award bid. This comes to us from the Communication Department and the Department of Community Resources for the L Magazine Agreement, Fall 2021 through Spring/Summer 2023 from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Sabo.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me, President McIntyre?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. So I am presenting this on behalf of my department and Parks and Recreation. Accepting this bid is the final step in our consideration of merging L Magazine, which is Livonia's Parks and Recreation Guide, and what we internally call Love Livonia, which residents might know as the city's 20- to 24-page magazine that focuses more on city services generally. This is something, this merger has been something that's been considered for years previously, and that's in large part the reason that the contracts for the two existing magazines expired very close to the same time, so that we can consider the possibility of printing a single magazine instead. In considering this as an option, we looked at four key factors. First, would merging the magazines save us money? The answer is yes. Over the course of the first, of the contract we are discussing here, the city would save nearly $50,000, about $24,000 annually in printing and postage costs. Second, would this move help us streamline the work that goes into producing these magazines? It would. We find that there is anywhere between eight to 12 pages of duplicative material between the two, as they exist right now. Third, would merging the magazines create a more effective communications product? And we believe it will, because it's going to put more information in front of a citywide audience in a single place, a single magazine. And finally, would this proposal increase the quality of the Parks and Recreation Program and Class Guide? And it will, because this program, this proposal will upgrade that magazine from a newsprint, largely black and white product, to a full-color magazine with a quality that is more consistent with the quality of the Parks and Recreation Department's offerings. So all of these factors are made possible through ID Enterprises' bid. This is a company our Parks and Recreation Department has worked on with this, for this product, specifically their L Magazine, since 1987. To us, they're a known commodity with a clear and workable production timeline, and they're a vendor with whom we have an effective working relationship. Thanks for your consideration of this item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sabo. Councilmember White.
Yes, I'm happy to offer an approving. I am very happy to, to find out that there's a cost savings of $50,000 to the city, and I think it will eliminate some duplicate to, duplicate efforts on behalf of, of people that put this together. So, thank you. And I would like it on consent, if there's no objection.
All right, Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Councilwoman White. I just had a quick question to the chair for Mr. Sabo, if that's okay?
Please.
On his, on your point about being duplicative, I don't think I said that correctly, I apologize. How many pages do we anticipate the magazine will be then? I mean, I know we're going to be kind of making it more efficient. Any idea? I mean, is it going to be roughly the same, or it might be a difficult question to answer so early on?
We are looking at, thank you, Councilmember Donavick, we are looking at the proposed magazine being 68 pages, which would be a slight decrease if you just combined the two magazines together. Right now, the Parks and Recreation Magazine is about 50 pages in recent issues. Our Love Livonia Magazine ranges between about 20 and 24, and actually 24 is what we, what we pay for it now, despite a recent issue was 20. And so obviously, that would lead us to be at least 70 pages. And so some of that duplicative material is what will allow us to be able to combine some things, and obviously lessen the total page count, not just, you know, adding the two booklets together, you know, a higher quality issue. Instead, we'll be able to eliminate some things that appear in both, and frankly, appear in both the exact same way. And so in that way, you know, kind of having those things together is definitely something that's going to streamline our process internally, and may devote less staff time to producing these two magazines.
Well, duplicative, that's the word of the day for me, and I appreciate your hard work, Mr. Sabo. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we've had that offered on consent. Thank you, everyone. Item number three is request for authorization to purchase one 2022 Ford E450 cutaway van through the State of Michigan bid process. This comes to us from the Housing Department for use by Livonia Community Transit from budgeted funds. And I believe we have Ms. Cruss from the, from community?
Yes, from the transit program, yes.
Yeah, I was trying to remember what the name of the new department is. Good evening, Felicia. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Yes, um, yes, we're asking for approval of a 2022 bus. It'll be a combination of a chassis and a bus, and the money, which was, I believe, about 78, no, $79,744, is coming from budgeted funds for 2021. And this will be a 13-passenger vehicle.
All right, council, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Everything seems in order in the packet. This is through the cooperative purchasing agreement, through budgeted funds. I'd be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent.
All right, any questions, any discussion, anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and place it on the, on the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Felicia.
Thank you.
Item number four is request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and to purchase 36 Dell desktop and laptop workstations. This comes to us from the Division of Police to replace workstations that are out of warranty or at end of life from budgeted funds. Good evening, LPD. I think that's Captain Gorowski that we have with us this evening. Let's see. Captain, you should be able to unmute yourself. There we go. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Good. Good evening, council members. This is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase 36 Dell desktop and laptop workstations. As you know, we have desktops in our building, plus we have laptops in our vehicles. Current desktop and laptop workstations, this is a yearly event, we replace half our number hopefully every year, and it's about the same this year. And we do it through the Michigan, State of Michigan Contract Pricing Bid, and we are under budget on it again this year, which we always like. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President, to the chair for Captain Gorowski, if that's okay?
Oh, please.
Captain, with, with us getting new desktop or laptop computer workstations, what happens to the old ones? Are we able to recoup the cost by selling those or recycling those, or how does that work?
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. There are times when we can, and the way that we do is through other police departments that may not have the, um, equipment that they need. But typically, these things are end of life, and they're not really resalable. So typically, we don't do that. But on occasion, we have gone with other smaller departments that need the help.
Great, thank you for the answer, sir. And I'd like to offer approving on consent, if there's objection.
All right, I don't see any objections. So we will go ahead, and we will place that on consent. Item number five is request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and to purchase new Life, new LifeScan systems. This comes to us from the Division of Police to replace the current LifeScan system that will no longer have access to support through Clemis from budgeted funds. Captain.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a request to waive the sealed bid process to bid to purchase two LiveScans, which are electronic fingerprinting stations, one up front in our building for civilians, those applying for jobs, etc., and one in our lockup for our customers. We do this through Clemis, and it's sole source through Ademia. For those, for those two reasons, this is, we're kind of, we have to go with these folks. And the pricing is good this year. It includes installation and training, and it is also under budget. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Council, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, just to kind of go over, you know, for all the millions of viewers that are out there watching our council meeting now, but, you know, when it does say the council has the ability to waive the formal bidding process, you know, I'd like to make mention that when we have cooperative purchasing agreement, that is already procured low pricing, that has already been through the whole RFP process. So we're getting the best prices that are out there. And obviously, for this one, just to do justice, that Clemis is basically requiring this as a sole source. So we are doing our due diligence to get the, be as fiscally responsible, and I appreciate the amount of effort that staff goes into making these packets and getting the best pricing. So there are no objections. This is budget funds. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
All right, I see no objections. And Captain, before you leave us, would you please, once again, give Ms. Nazrchowski, who is one of our reserve officers and heads up the CERT program, thanks, and thanks to her CERT team for their outstanding work over at the Senior Center with the vaccines. I, I just continue, every time I run into people, I got a lot of phone calls and emails. Everyone I see or I run into who went through that process and now are going through the second round cannot say enough about how well that's handled. So please extend our, our thanks and appreciation for their outstanding work.
Madam President, thank you for mentioning her hard works again, and all the, all the things that she does, not just for the police department, but for the city. Just a fantastic person and such a hardworking employee, and I'll be sure to pass that along for you. Thank you for saying so.
And, and I don't think that probably a lot of people who are over at that program don't, you know, they may not see the CERT volunteers and may not realize that they are indeed volunteers who commit hundreds of hours, usually generally, to stay current with training and support the city at many events, and many important things like that one. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, item number six, this is an award of bid. This is coming to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for beverage and snack vending services at the Jack E. Kirksey Recreation Center, outdoor pools and Civic Park Senior Center for a three-year agreement, May 1, 2021 through April 30, 2024 from budget funds. Good evening, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Council President McIntyre and Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Everything's working then. We are up for our annual, or our three-year agreement expires shortly here. This is for vending services for the Jack E. Kirksey Recreation Center, our outdoor pools and the Civic Park Senior Center. Bids were specification array by the department advertised, and we received two bidders for this, this vending agreement. And we are recommending that specialized vending services receive the contract that is based upon the highest percentage of gross receipts. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Councilmember.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
Having reviewed the information that's been provided to us, I'll offer this, an approving for this, for consent, if there's no objection.
Seeing no objections, we'll place that on consent. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Item number seven is an award of bid. This comes to us also from the Department of Parks and Recreation regarding lots of renovations from budgeted funds. Good evening, Ms. Menugian. You should be, you should be, there we go. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Madam President. I'm Stephanie Menugian, Aquatics Coordinator for the Department of Parks and Recreation. And we have a renovation project this summer at Botsford Pool. So this, I'm presenting two projects. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm getting...
Are you there?
Yeah, I'm just getting some feedback. I want to make sure everybody...
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing you, Stephanie.
Is it better now?
No.
All right. Let me go grab my headphones and see if that helps. Sorry.
Okay.
Do you think she's in the pool?
I'm just happy we won, Madam Chair. I know you are. You know, I know your alma mater did not win. Your alma mater does win. It's very exciting.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, that's better, Stephanie.
Okay, all right. So I apologize about that. Thank you for your...
Felicia.
So we've got two projects that I'm asking to be awarded to Advanced Pools. They were the low bidder on both of the projects at Botsford, the first being a re-plumbing of our, our valves on our filter tanks. And that's to switch from pneumatic valves to manual valves. The current, the current tanks at Botsford are no longer in production, so finding replacement parts are becoming hard to come by. And replacing them to manual valves will allow us to be more efficient in our, in our filter process for the pools. And then when we decide to move forward in replacing the tanks in the near future, those valves can be replaced. The second project is a removal of the current Marsite and replacement. Also, the low bid for that was Advanced Pools as well. And these come from budgeted funds.
Council, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to offer an approving. It's fortunate for our community that we've been able to invest a lot of money into our pools and aquatics over the last couple of years. But Botsford is definitely in need of some love. We spent a little bit of money out there a couple of years ago, putting in like a water feature for some younger tots, and I think this will complement it well. It's important to note that this is a pool that does serve, you know, the north side of the city, you know, and it's one of the few city facilities in that general area. So it's a, I believe, money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, who did the work at the, at the Kirksey Pool?
That would be OP Aquatics through a subcontract through Midwest Pools. OP Aquatics no longer operates in Michigan.
Okay.
Exclusively moved to Ohio.
Okay, and that was the company that did the liner, and the liner failed a lot of times, and then we...
No, no, that was the company that ended up putting the Marsite in it. The Run Assist was the company that put in the liner.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam President, that'll be for consent, if there's no objection. I apologize.
No, I thought you said that. I'm sorry. On consent, seeing no objections. Item number eight is an award of bid. This comes to us also from the Department of Parks and Recreation regarding Sheldon Pool Deck Paving from Budget Fund. Stephanie.
Yes, for Sheldon Pool, we are asking for an award to Luigi, sorry, an award to the low bid to do the concrete replacement for the decking at Sheldon Pool. It's in need of some repairs for us to operate the pool without objection from the Health Department. A lot of the concrete on the deck currently is uneven and can be a trip hazard. This is the minimum amount of decking that we could get done to allow it for us to operate. The low bid was Luigi and Sons Cement Company, so we are asking council to award it to that company from budgeted funds.
Councilmember White, and then Councilmember Toy.
Everything looks in order. Based on what I've reviewed in the packet, I'll offer approving on consent, please.
Councilmember Toy.
That's okay. I was going to offer approving as well to Luigi. Thanks.
Stephanie, is this, Sheldon did not open, all the pool seasons are running together in my head?
Sheldon did not open in 2020. The last time we operated was 2019. But due to the pandemic last year, and companies being able to get out and open the pool, they wouldn't have been able to come out until July.
And what's the, what's the, what's the life of, of the work that's being done?
I will have to look, I'm not too familiar with, this is my first concrete project, but it should, you know, concrete decking, the average lifespan of concrete, it should last us, you know, 10, 20 years, but I can look and get further information for you on that.
Okay, because, and the reason I'm asking is, and I don't know the, in our long-term, and we're really in the process of, Councilmember Toy, did you have something, or?
Yeah, yeah, it just dawned on me what I wanted to ask. When you, I don't mean to do.
Okay. You know, I know we're in the process of putting together the long-term Parks and Rec master plan, but given, given that we haven't been able to open the library over there, and I understand that that's in an area of the city where we don't, you know, we would very much like to ensure recreation facilities over there, but that's, Stephanie, is that the smallest of the three pools?
In a sense, I would say it's the smallest. Clement Circle being split into kind of two pools, I would say it's the smallest right now, and it's, it's the least used pool out of the three.
Yep. So, so I'm, I'm really, you know, wondering, given the, given that we've got space, a lot of city space over there, and that we have a library that we haven't been able to reopen now, I think, and again, everything runs together.
It has been for two years.
You know, if it, if this is the right time to be putting, to be putting money in, into a significant amount of money into Sheldon. So I, I don't mind it being on, on the agenda with approval, of course, but I would ask that not, that it be placed on the regular.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Stephanie, for all the work you're doing on these pools. That's great.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, Luigi, are they out of the east side, right? They're not local, right?
Correct. They are out of the east side. They are in, I believe, Romulus?
Oh.
Roseville, I'm sorry, Roseville.
Roseville, okay, okay. All righty, I just wondered. And do we have any numbers on the Sheldon Pool? I mean, do you know offhand? I know they're the last one, but are we going to do any PR on that now that we have this new magazine and Parks and Rec's going to join in? Maybe we can get some colored pictures of the, the pool and the new deck, and what do you think?
Yeah, I, I know, just from the operations standpoint, it's a great pool for our outdoor swim lessons. Our swim lessons families do like going there in the evening. So from that standpoint, it's a great pool to get it up and operating this summer to get some outdoor swim lessons, so we can, with the reduced capacities we have currently indoors, it would help expand that program to help alleviate some of our current wait lists, hopefully this summer. So in terms of that, it would be great to get this minimal work done, just to get it up and operating. And then I have, I do have it in the L Magazine for summer right now that it is open, so we do have that, that issue just got mailed out to all our residents.
Hey, Stephanie, do we have any shelters over there? I'm trying to remember, by Sheldon Pool there?
There is a, there, I believe there is a pavilion at the park.
Okay.
Yeah, it does. I don't know how often it gets rented. That would be a question I can get, um, for the information.
I just wondered, because it's a high population density over there, you know, stores right over there. So I'm, I'm over there quite a bit, and people walk a lot in that area. It just, it would be really nice to, you know what I mean, jazz it up a bit.
Yes.
You know, I know it all costs money, don't get me wrong, but I really appreciate how you're handling the pools. That is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Toy.
You're welcome. All right, very good. So that'll be placed on the regular agenda. Thank you very much, Stephanie, and you do an excellent, excellent job at the pool. It's a lot of work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Have a great evening.
You too. Item number nine, requested designated consultant through the qualified bid selection QBS process and amend the engineering contract with OHM Advisors to provide professional engineering services. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, number 7453-01, project areas four, five, and six, in an amount not to exceed $372,000. This is Council Resolution 372-20 and 365-16. Mr. Zalantet.
Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. I hope I can be as electrifying as Stephanie was, but either Ted Davis has to get a new computer, or can we have the police add another computer for 37, and give one to her, or donate the one that's going to be taken away. So hopefully help her out, but she did a great job.
I think, I think Mr. Davis is making her work with some... I think, I think Mr. Davis is making her work with some standard equipment. Anyway.
Yeah, maybe here in Brandy got the same computer, but uh, this one's, this one's a simple one. As you know, we've been doing the Drinking Water Revolving Funds um, several times. This one's in section one and section twelve, actually up near the uh, Botsford Pool area, Inkster, uh, west of Inkster, north of Seven Mile. Looking to do some water main improvements. We have three point nine miles of water main to be replaced, six inch and eight inch pipe bursting. Uh, we're looking for OHM to provide that CE construction engineering inspection. As you know, Dwarf will be out, uh, it's out currently out for bids. It'll be, uh, the bids will be attained on April thirteenth. And we'll be bringing that forth uh, to you on April twenty-sixth for your resolution to be approved, once you find the lowest qualified bidder. But obviously, OHM, Jessica Katers, we've worked with her before last year and does a great job on uh, doing the contract administration. Uh, she's on board if you have any questions or myself, but looking forward to uh, moving forward with this project and getting this completed.
Uh, council member Jolly?
Todd said it all. I'll offer an approving for consent. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Item number ten, this is request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the twenty-twenty-one asphalt road repair program by extending contract twenty dash A. Unit prices with Nagel Paving Company. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for Contract twenty-one dash A in the amount not to exceed three million eight hundred forty-one thousand five hundred four dollars and twenty-nine cents for one year. And this is Council Resolution one oh two dash twenty.
Yes, Madam President, we had Nagel uh, bid a project last year. They were about four hundred fifty thousand less than the second bidder, which was Cadillac Asphalt. We were able to uh, coordinate with them and extend their unit prices, except for several items uh, related to this year's program. Obviously, uh, we have a good working relationship with them and wanted to see the uh, project move forward. Uh, they were able to uh, again, give us a, a great quote to do the project that we needed to. Uh, one of the couple highlights for this year's program is Victor Parkway. Uh, we're gonna take that road from Pembroke to Eight Mile, make it a road diet, go from four lanes to three. Um, about ten years ago, we did some patching up there. So the timing's perfect now to mill that off, uh, resurface it and make a bike lane on both sides um, for, for that area and hopefully connect in the green mead and continue on with uh, obviously connectivity and bike walk in that area. The other one is Hubbard Road uh, from Five Mile to Buchanan. We're gonna extend the east side there, six foot lane. Uh, and finally connect up from Rotary to uh, Buchanan on the east side. The west side's a little bit more difficult, but we are hopeful uh, to c- continue on and get the west side, so that way we can stripe it as a bike lane. But this, this project itself will allow for a widened shoulder uh, to, for the future setup to make it a designated bike lane on both sides. But uh, the biggest thing is we have, like we just talked about before in section one and twelve, we have road improvements in there in section one. Waiting for the water main to get done. This will be the last location that Nagel will do for the water main, uh, for the, for the locations on road repairs with the water mains. They actually will be down in section thirty-five off of Joy Road to finish up last year's Dwarf projects and finish those streets up there, Fremont, Hugh, Louise, uh, those, those streets there to make sure it's all put back together. Any further questions, I'm happy to answer those and looking forward to uh, moving forward with the construction here until spring has arrived.
Uh, council member White?
Time to start this project. Let's get it going. I will offer an approving and consent if there's no objection.
I see no objection. On consent. Item number twelve is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the twenty-twenty-one concrete road repair program by extending contract twenty dash C unit prices with hard rock concrete. This too comes from the Engineering Division for Contract twenty-one dash C in the amount not to exceed four million nine hundred thousand dollars for one year. This is Council Resolution one zero three dash twenty.
Madam President, I think we skipped item number eleven, which was the CE for the OHM Advisors for the Nagel.
I'm, I'm sorry, I s- I skipped that, right over that, because it was the second OHM. We'll go back to item number eleven. This is a request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors for the Construction Engineering Services for the twenty-twenty-one Asphalt Road Program, Contract twenty-one dash eight, Engineering Division for the same Council Resolution three six five dash sixteen. Mr. Zalonsik, sorry, I didn't want to take away your items tonight.
Okay, I don't want to upset Mark Law from OHM. He's been on the infancy of this thing since, since, since two thousand and two. So he's been a great asset uh, to help make sure that we obviously do a great job on our infrastructure, on our road improvements. So yeah, we're looking for their, their, obviously, construction engineering services for this project, based on the construction cost we just talked about. Uh, they've done a great job over the last nineteen years uh, and looking forward to working with them again. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those. And Mark's on the, on the call too, if you need anything.
Alright, hello, Mark.
Madam President?
Uh, council member Donovan?
Sorry for interrupting. Um, kinda like Mr. Zalonsik said, we, we've had a longstanding relationship with OHM Advisors. They are a local company and uh, the packet looks good. I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there is no objection.
Alright, I see no objections, council member Donovan. We will place it on consent. Now we go to item number twelve. This is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the twenty-twenty-one Concrete Road Repair Program by extending contract twenty dash C prices with hard rock concrete. This two comes source from the Engineering Division for Contract twenty-one dash C in the amount not to exceed four million nine hundred thousand dollars for one year. Council Resolution one oh three dash two zero. Mr. Zalonsik, sorry about that.
It's okay. Again, uh, hard rock concrete was a bidder last year. They're almost a million dollars cheaper than the second low bidder in two thousand and twenty, before COVID hit. So again, we thought, you know, obviously we wanted to save the taxpayers' money by going and extending this contract based on the unit prices. The only thing it changed was the mobilization cost, because we're making them bounce around the city. But overall, they've had unit prices. Looking forward to working with them again and AEW. Um, there is a little hiccup. We do have a couple of streets that were left over from last year, because of late start. Uh, we have Ladywood, Williams, uh, Portion Marler and Roycroft to be done this year as a first priority. And then working into the, the thirty-five segments that we have left to complete uh, for uh, concrete itself. So again, um, four point nine million dollars, a lot of work to get done to the end of the year. We're in our ninth year of the renewal co- uh, renewal of the village. Looking forward to uh, completing these streets. And appreciate all your efforts behind the scenes with City Council and your support over the years to make sure that we get these roads done and do a great job for our residents to uh, to last thirty years, twenty, thirty years. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Zalonsik. Council?
Madam Pre- Madam President?
Vice President Burr?
Uh, always happy when we can extend unit prices from what's already a contract that was a little bid. So I'll offer approving for um, consent if there's no objection.
I see no objection. So we will place item number twelve, Consent Agenda. Item number thirteen is a request to amend the contract with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick Incorporated for Construction Engineering Services for the twenty-twenty-one Concrete Road Program. This is Contract twenty-one dash C, Engineering Division for the same, uh, Council Resolution three six five dash one six. Mr. Zalonsik?
Again, this is uh, based on the con- uh, construction cost of the project. AW provides construction engineering services, which include testing and inspection, obviously for quality. We want to make sure we have a long-lasting road. Our residential streets are seven inches thick. Uh, you know, industrial's a nine inches, so they'll do the testing, uh, do the concrete um, uh, strength test, uh, working with G2 on this project itself. Do a great job every year. Uh, Scott Lockwood, the Executive Vice President, uh, he must be on cloud nine tonight since Michigan won, since he's a Michigan man. So he's, he's in the, in the wings there. So I'm sure he's happy. Ho- hopefully can make it to lead eight and keep moving forward. But uh, I look forward to working with their team. They do an excellent job. And again, it's a lo- year-round uh, start from April to November. And appreciate all the efforts behind the scenes to get this uh, project completed with our concrete streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I knew there was a reason I really liked Scott. Um, I would like to offer an approving. They do outstanding work and so does Mr. Zalonsik, especially this week.
Alright, I see no objections. Um, council member Toy, so we'll place that on consent. Item number fourteen is an award of contract. This two comes from the Engineering Division for twenty-twenty-one Concrete Road Maintenance and Selective Slab Program. This is Contract twenty-one dash J from budgeted funds.
Madam President, we had six bids for this project in which we do selective slab repairs. Uh, that culminates from DPW and engineering, get a, a master list together. We try to pick twenty-five locations a year. Uh, there were, the trees have heaved up the pavement or caused significant pounding of water and damage, uh, prioritized. We get that done along with other stretches of the road. Uh, this year we're focusing on Blue Skies uh, from Five Mile to Jameson. Uh, looking for your support uh, to have Great Lakes Contracting Solutions, the low bidder at eight hundred forty-four thousand eight fifteen and seventy-seven cents to do this project. Again, we had uh, six bidders and the highest bid went all the way up to uh, one million three hundred sixty-five thousand seven eighty-seven. So uh, we worked with Great Lakes before, great contractor. Looking forward to another great job to be done by end of August. And appreciate uh, your support in this, this uh, obviously yearly endeavor to make sure that we fix these, these uh, selective locations to help our residents and uh, you know, prove their quality of ride ability in front of their house.
Council member White?
I'll be happy to offer the approving resolution on consent if there's no objection. This is turning into the Mr. Zalonsik Show tonight, I guess.
I know. We all enjoy it.
We do.
Get ready for, for summer. Got to get the construction done.
Absolutely.
Alright, I see no objections. We'll place that on consent. Item number fifteen is a request to amend the construction, the contract with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick Incorporated for the Construction Engineering Services for the twenty-twenty-one Concrete Road Maintenance Selective Slab Program. Contract twenty-one J, uh, this comes from the Engineering Divi- Engineering Division for the same, Council Resolution three fifty-six dash sixteen.
Again, City Council AW, we're providing the construction engineering services for this. There's, Inspector Day's been in the project itself. But again, looking to work with uh, their team to go out and get these areas completed by the end of August. And uh, you know, we've done this in the past. This is, I think, our fourth or fifth year now, breaking it out to get it, get it completed early. Away from the reconstruction portion has been successful. And again, it's with the uh, uh, obviously support of DPW, uh, Tricia Gabriel and Dave Lear, the Engineering Department, to uh, help solidify these locations and get these things completed. Thank you.
Council member White?
You're on cue. Sorry. I'll offer an approving on consent if there's no objection.
I see no objection. I do have one question. Is it Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick or Eckstein and Westrick?
I'll let Scott uh, give him some, some airtime if you want.
That, that'd be great, since he's joined us tonight.
If he's available, we can bring him into the room.
Oh, yes, yeah, I guess I have to do that, don't I? Mr. Lockwood, sorry, I know it's late, but I've asked this question bef- let's see, there you go. Good evening, Mr. Lockwood.
Good evening. How is everybody?
We're good. How are you? Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you very much. A- and I'll say this, I think I say this, well, I know I say this every time, but we really appreciate the opportunity um, to be part of this program. And I, you know, it, it is absolutely exemplary in the region. We represent, you know, thirty-some communities and this is by far the best road program. But that wasn't why you wanted me to speak, I know. I just.
We appreciate hearing that. And, and you know, we're very proud of the work that Mr. Zalonsik and his team and DPW do. And they, they do, they set the bar high. So thank you for recognizing their work.
Yeah, they are the hardest working team in southeast Michigan also, without question.
Um, next to the, next to the councils.
Yeah, yeah, engineering team.
Yeah.
Anyway.
To answer your question, it's Eckstein.
Eckstein, okay. You know, I keep thinking that I'm pronounced, and I'm sure I asked you this probably six years ago. And I probably did it correctly three times and I've done it incorrectly four hundred times. So thank you for uh, thank you for that.
No problem. We really appreciate it.
Going forward. And thank you for being with us tonight, Scott. We, we miss seeing you. We know you don't miss driving to Livonia.
No, I miss, I miss seeing everybody in person a lot.
Thank you. It's, it's really nice to hear from you, if even only virtually, but thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
Alright, item number sixteen is an award of contract. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the twenty-twenty-one Pavement Crack and Joint Sealing Program, Contract twenty-one D from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalonsik?
Alright, the last one, so we can all move, move forward and take a deep breath. But the last one is Michigan Joint uh, Sealing was a low bidder. There was four bids taken back on March ninth on Mitten uh, in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents. The second low bidder was two hundred eight thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars. Basically, Michigan Joint and Skidella are the uh, predominant uh, joint sealing companies out there. Uh, we're asking for your approval for Michigan Joint to go ahead and get uh, our local major roads completed this year to help prolong the pavement life. As you know, we do a great job of trying to uh, get the roads after a few years in the asphalt sealed back up and some of the concretes, get them routed after, after they've uh, shrunk. And uh, you know, avoid getting that water down in the concrete to make that pavement last longer. So appreciate your assistance in this one. A- again, looking forward to working with Michigan Joint, who's been our, our um, contractor from two thousand and four to two thousand and six. Again, two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Alright, council?
Madam President?
Vice President Burr?
Happy to offer this for approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you, everyone.
See no objections. Alright, and with that, I believe, is it true we come to the end of the tide show this evening? Thank you, Mr. Zalonsik. Great job. And, and please thank your uh, Dave and your, your team and the folks you work with at DPW. Item number seventeen, proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances is amended, Planning Department. This could, this comes from the Planning Department to amend the Historic Preservation Commission Ordinance, Chapter two point five six, Section zero two zero, definition, Section zero five zero, Historic Preservation Commission Creation Membership, and Section zero six zero, Commission Powers and Duties. Mr. Taramina?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, these changes to Chapter two point five six, the Historic Preservation Commission or ordinance are required by the state Historic Preservation Office in order for the city uh, to qualify under the Certified Local Government Program as previously authorized by the council um, back in uh, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Alright, council, uh, council member Jolly?
Madam President, I'll offer an approving for consent. Uh, Mr. Taramina, explain the rationale. And if it's something we want to participate in, we need to comply. Thank you.
I, I think this can't go on consent, because it's a, it's an amendment to the.
I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay, alright, thank you. So we'll put that on the regular and you've offered a, you've offered um, an approving. Or, you know, offered first suggestion for first read, I guess, right? Number eighteen is request for three-year exa- extension of the site plan approval. This comes to us from the Planning Commission for Petition two zero one four dash zero two dash zero eight dash zero two, submitted by Victor East LLC, previously approved by the City Council on May eighth, twenty seventeen. In connection with a proposal to construct a one-story office research building, Victor East improperly located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Newburg Road and Victor Parkway, three seven six four zero, Seven Mile Road in the southeast of Section six. It says southeast Y, but I think that's supposed to be maybe southeast something of Section six. This is Council Resolution one three eight dash eighteen dash one six six dash seventeen. Council Resolution two two eight dash sixteen, uh, Council Resolution one twenty-five dash one five, and Council Resolution one oh four dash fourteen. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Jolly?
Uh, why, we're just gonna ask if, if a, thank you. Um, for Mark and Paul, does this continue to be a placeholder here in hopes of development? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, is it typical that we do it for three years? I can't really recall.
Uh, no, it's not typical, uh, but the council uh, uh, did approve it for three-year period uh, well, three years ago. So, uh, we've done two years uh, in the past. Um, that's probably more common than three years. Of course, one-year extensions are very common.
Okay, um, I'll just say for the, our newer colleagues here, who haven't dealt with this before, this is an interesting site. Um, it has some history with it. So I'm okay with the three years and I'll offer an approving for consent. Um, thank you.
Uh, council member Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was going to ask, um, how many times have we done this on this site? Do we remember to you or Mark or whoever?
Yeah, this is the fifth extension.
Fifth extension?
Yeah, the original approval dates back to two thousand and fourteen.
You know, and I've known, I don't mean to, you know, cast terrible things, but um, maybe it's not terrible. But information-wise, I've had several people say that they, you know, tried to negotiate so, out of their property. And, you know, the prices are real extravagant on it, um, which to the seller, I, I'm not condoning it. It's just, you know, as, as Jim or Councilman Jolly tried to point out a little bit, um, you know, I guess I don't have a big problem with it, but I would hope by the next three years at least, you know, the virus is over and uh, all good things happen and the economy's humming. And we can finally either develop it or do something with that piece. I mean, it's nice as open land, but even so, um, I mean, it's nice as open land, but even so, I, I think that, you know, as been said, it almost appears it's a placeholder every time it comes before us. I appreciate it, but I'm, I'm a little troubled by it as well, but I'll be supporting it. Thank you, though, Mark.
All right. So we, we had an approving for consent offered by Councilmember Jolly, and then some additional comments from Councilmember Toy. All right, Mr. Terramina, we, we never really went to officially. Is there anything else you wanted to add? Okay. All right. Item number nineteen is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding Petition 2021-02-02-02, submitted by SPP Investors Two LLC, requesting approval to redevelop a site, including demolishing the existing restaurant, Romano's Macaroni Grill, constructing a full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, Shake Shack, and constructing a bank with drive-through facilities on property located in the northeast corner of Seven Mile and Hagerty Roads, 39307 Mile Road in the southeast quarter of Section Six. Mr. Terramina.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the site of the former Romano's Macaroni Grill. It's a one-story, eight thousand two hundred square foot restaurant that was opened in 1992 with a maximum seating of around two hundred and eighty, and this is the aerial photograph. The next slide shows the layout of the existing restaurant. And what you can see here is where the building is in relationship to the site. It's on the west side of the property, parking on the, on the west, the south, and the, the east sides extending all the way to the eastern border of the, of the site. The petition seeks to demolish and remove the existing restaurant and replace it with two new freestanding buildings. One would be a new full-service Shake Shack restaurant, and then the other would be a, a branch bank. The Shake Shack would be on the westerly part of the site, in the same general location as the existing restaurant. That's identified as parcel A. Parcel B contains the bank. As you can also see from this, both buildings would have drive-through facilities. The Shake Shack is about thirty-four hundred, almost thirty-five hundred square feet, so less than half the size of the existing restaurant. It would have seventy-four interior seats, seventy-four seats inside, seventy outside, for a total of a hundred and fourteen. The patio, the outside patio is shown here on the south and the east sides of the building. The building complies with all of the setback requirements of the ordinance. Interior layout submitted shows the dining area, kitchen, and bathrooms. It's general at this point. As you can see here, too, the drive-through facilities associated with this restaurant would commence on the east side of the building and then wrap around. This is all one-way circulation, traveling in a counterclockwise direction. This is a double drive-through lane. This is, or would be Shake Shack's first drive-up restaurant. The building itself is, contains a combination of fluted concrete panels as well as cement fiber siding. This is, these are the renderings showing what the restaurant would look like with the canopy surrounding the outdoor CD area. This is the composite material, the white area is the concrete. And then you can see some painted brick along the rear of the, of the building in the east side where the pickup window would be located. The bank, on the other hand, this is only conceptual plan. Once a user is identified, they'd have to submit detailed plans for a formal review. The bank complies with all of the ordinance requirements in terms of its setback. There are some issues related to the spacing of the aisles for the drive-up operation, but those are details that we would look at when the plan is submitted for approval. Again, this is only conceptual. The drive-up operation would be on the east side. Traffic would circulate in a counterclockwise direction. There would be a canopy here on the east side for the, for the three ATM lanes that would be created. Other, there are two driveways that provide access to the site. One is on Hagerty, one is on Seven Mile Road. The drive approaches remain in the same current location. There would be configuration adjustments to the Seven Mile approach. This would be restricted to right out and right in only, so it will not allow for left-hand turns from that location. Left-hand turns would be allowed from the Hagerty driveway. This is something the county is restricting, the turn movements on the Seven Mile Road approach. There could be additional limitations on the left turn movements as it relates to the Hagerty approach once this matter is resolved finally by the county. Parking is fully compliant on the site. Stormwater management would be handled by means of an underground detention system that would be located beneath the parking lot. And the planning commission on a split vote approved this project at its meeting on March ninth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is exciting to actually have Livonia on the forefront of attracting this kind of new opportunity. This is very similar to the, can't think of it, the chicken restaurant. What is it? Chick-fil-A. The only thing that is a little bit more exciting about this to me is we would be receiving the first one, and we would be the first in the area. I think from a, from a architectural design, with my limited knowledge here, this looks like a really cool restaurant. I like the idea that we have outdoor seating built in directly here. I think it would be well utilized. My only concern, obviously, would be the concern, I think, that has been expressed as this has come out, would be with traffic. Mark, one question for you. With the site plan as it is, would there be any easy access into the neighboring parcels to the north if need be to line up any sort of overflow traffic? Go ahead.
No, good question. The answer to that is no, nothing easily, could easily be accomplished. The, the site is confined by a drainage course that runs along its entire north boundary. That prevents any direct connection to the development to the north. There would be the opportunity potentially to connect to Chippewa Drive to the east. That's a private drive. That's the same drive that we had the issue with Beaumont, where the, the developers in that case are, are not willing to allow that, that connection. So hopefully that answers your question.
It, it does, and I appreciate the answer. The only thing I would say here, obviously excited about this, I think it's a great addition. When we dealt with Chick-fil-A, I asked that, uh, something be added to the site approval plan stating that if, if there was a need for overflow traffic direction, that we put an item stating that the operator of the restaurant would be responsible for reimbursing the Livonia Police. Or I think, we talked about it, I see Kathleen, I think she mentioned that as well. She might have been first on that, but I think that might be the appropriate thing to do here as well, honestly, just to play fair. And they're two similar circumstances with potential traffic problems. This is already a congested area. But if we can make it work, I think we should do everything we can to make it work. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Toramina, if I may.
Please.
Mr. Toramina, I just, so, you know, I, I kind of went through the packet. Does the same stipulations go along as we did with Chick-fil-A, meaning that the, that the restaurant six weeks prior to opening would have to submit their traffic plan for approval to the commission?
You know, that language was not added to the approving resolution. If that's something that council thinks would, would be helpful in this case, we could provide that language. It's, this doesn't have a history like Chick-fil-A does, obviously. We knew going in that that was going to present traffic issues. We don't know that in this case, but it, it might be better to, to be cautious in that sense. So.
No, thank you. And yeah, I mean, just for the record, I am super excited. Shake Shack, you know, having this in, in, in the city of Livonia is, is a huge win. Especially the, the old Macaroni Grill site, you know, drove by that a lot. And, you know, it, it's, it's such a prime corner, so to see this development is, is awesome. You know, obviously, the first thing that comes to everybody's mind is, you know, Hagerty is, is going to be between Hagerty and Seven Mile. We're just loading up on development. So that's where, I, I'm going to defer, obviously, to the traffic studies and, and the lights being timed. But overall, I think this is a huge win for the city, a huge win for the, all the area to, to get this type of restaurant in there. With it being a drive-through, you know, I, I don't know if, have, has there been a motion made yet? I don't think so.
No.
I'd be happy to offer an approving for regular, but to add the, the language that six weeks prior to the restaurant opening, traffic plan would be submitted and approved by the traffic commission, pretty much the same language that we'd used on Chick-fil-A, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. I've heard nothing but good things about this restaurant and all it has to offer. I would concur with what's been said on it, and I, yeah, there might be a little traffic here, but I think, like, has been said, the drive-through will help. And I just think it's a welcome addition for Livonia. Really speaks well for us. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may.
Please, Mr. Terramina.
And really, just to clarify for, for the benefit of the applicant, what is being asked for is a plan that would essentially present a way of handling traffic during the, what we sometimes call the honeymoon period, with the expectation that there could be substantial traffic. So how, how that traffic would be routed and, and where all the staging and stacking would take place. The review, Mr. McCullough, you said the traffic commission? And I believe the, the, the previous development, we require that to go before the traffic bureau for its review. Is that what you would prefer?
That is correct, yes. Whatever the language, if it's a traffic bureau, let's get that same kind of language, just for, just like you said, you hit it the nail on the head with the honeymoon period.
All right, so Councilmember Jolly.
Can we make sure to put that contracting language in there as well? Just if need be, and it gives them an incentive to figure it out themselves, to not even go down that path. And the whole idea there, it's not that we want to make money, it's, it's I want professionals directing traffic if need be and not their employees out on Hagerty and Seven Mile doing it themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Jolly, there's one problem in this that we don't, didn't have with Chick-fil-A, is we order another jurisdiction on that. That's going to be, you know, because that's Northville, I believe it's Northville Township on the other side of the road. Well, we'll try to figure something out.
Thank you. I just, you know, listen, even if we express in some way, I, I just think, I think my experience seeing non-law enforcement trying to direct traffic offside of, off of a site of a restaurant scares me for many reasons. For the people in the cars and the people trying to direct the traffic as well. So I'd just rather have the professionals as well. Thank you. And hopefully it doesn't come to that. That's obviously the, the hope.
Thank you. Vice President Barr.
Sorry, took my hand down, I didn't unmute my microphone. Through the chair to Mark. So it looks like, like, how is somebody supposed to head back east out of this property? We, they can't turn east on the south side of the property. We can't turn south on Hagerty on the west side of the property. So we're all excited that this is in Livonia, but we're, we're pushing everybody out of Livonia. Nobody can come back in. I mean, what's, what's been the thinking, like, with planning commission and stuff, as to how that traffic flow would work for what I would assume is a significant amount of cars are going to want to head east?
Well, in those instances, and if there is a prohibition on left turns from the Hagerty, onto the Hagerty Approach, onto Hagerty Road, excuse me, they, they'd have to find an alternative route.
Well, I, yeah, and, and you said it's Wayne County that's forcing that on the south side of the property?
The, the petitioner's traffic consultant is here, and she can describe what those conversations have been thus far. But yes, Wayne County's preliminary review of this, they've indicated the restriction on those turn movements at Seven Mile. They would still allow the left turns onto Hagerty, but consideration will be given to periods, probably during the PM peak period, that left turns would be prohibited. So it would be in those instances where it would not be possible.
Similar to the Chick-fil-A site, I just feel like these turn restrictions are actually going to cause more problems than what they solve. And, I mean, that, that driveway onto Seven Mile, or the, the entrance onto Seven Mile has been there as long as Macaroni Grill's been there. I understand that the traffic patterns are different here, but I also, in reading the traffic study, got the impression they were making the case, that they had some pretty compelling reasons for why they don't necessarily think that this is going to drive increased incremental traffic to the extent some people would think, you know, with the high pass-by, I think they called it stop. So, I don't know, you said that traffic consultant is here. Madam President, is it possible for us to speak to her or him?
Yeah. If you're, if you're amenable, I'd like to go to Councilmember Toy first.
Okay.
Julie Kroll.
Thank you.
Councilmember Toy. You're all set? I, I think I just read your lips that you're all set.
Oh, you are good. Yes, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
All right. And then we will go to Ms. Julie Kroll, who is working as, or acting as traffic consultant on this project, looking. Oh, there we go. There you are. You're already there, Ms. Kroll. Good evening.
Hello. Y'all still awake? It's ten-thirty.
We are. We're excited about Shake Shack, so we're all, we're all awake again.
Yeah. No, I'm excited too. If you haven't been to one, it's, it's, it's a cool experience. So to answer your question, Mr. Vice President, we did meet with Wayne County and their traffic engineer, Pete Malinkovich, several months ago to discuss site access. Because it's a change of use, that gives the approving authority to make changes to the site access. So even though the access has been there for years, because it's a change of use that allows them to then review the site access permits again for safety. So because of the concerns associated with safe access on Seven Mile, particularly with the left turns entering at Chippewa that would be blocking the egress movements from this driveway, and basically the conflicting back-to-back left turns between Chippewa and Hagerty that would be blocking the site access. That's why they restricted access to right-in, right-out on Seven Mile. Now, they understood that, you know, we were causing some part of a hardship for this development. So they said they would look at the site access on Hagerty and that potentially only restrict that access during the PM peak hour. So the rest of the, you know, twenty-two hours a day that that site access wouldn't be restricted, it would just be during those afternoon peaks where egress left turns would be restricted for the site. So during those, those brief periods, as Mr. Terramina said, that those vehicles would have to find another route to go back to the east.
Okay, thanks for, uh, thanks for talking through that a little bit. Have you, I don't know if it's you or someone else from the petitioner team that, I'll ask you for now. If you need to defer to someone else, that's fine. What was the level of effort that was put into seeking an agreement with, I forget, is it Pentagon or Paragon or whoever the?
Pentagon, yes.
Pentagon. What, because, because when I look at this and not having put, this is certainly not having put the time in nor having the expertise that you do to analyze these things. But the thing that seems to me to be the most, the best solution, similar to what we've had with a similar project recently, is, is to tie this into that drive at the light that goes by the Hilton Garden Inn and stuff there. How aggressively did the petitioner look into an agreement to do that?
Yep. And that was honestly the first thing when I saw this site plan, is I asked them, did you guys try and talk to the Pentagon Association? And I can defer to the applicant regarding those discussions, but I do know that they had those discussions and, and met with a similar response that the Beaumont team also met with.
And is that response similar, is, is Pentagon just asking too much money?
I, I'll defer to the, to the applicant. I, I'll defer to the, to the applicant to answer that.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Good evening. Is that Mr. Erickson? Who's the applicant? There we go. You should be able to meet yourself.
Yes, yes, I did. And yes, good evening. Yeah, Chip Erickson, I'm with the, the, I am the applicant and developer for the property. And just in a quick answer to that, yes, starting back in twenty nineteen, we actually engaged Pentagon to find out if there was a possibility for joint access, and they reject us in writing. We came back in, in twenty twenty and, and made further overtures that were, were not accepted, not well-accepted. So we just stopped conversation and, and have moved on.
Okay, I, I just, I'm pretty irritated with Pentagon after the last project and this project. I mean, they, they are holding these things hostage, and what's going to end up happening here? People coming out of Shake Shack that want to go east, you know what's going to happen? They're going to head north on Hagerty, and they're going to circle through the Pentagon property. That's what they're going to do. So Pentagon's probably not even paying attention to this tonight. I don't know, but I, I'm just, this is not, I, I'm excited about Shake Shack, don't get me wrong, and, and, but, but there's a very obvious solution to the traffic pattern thing here, and just, just not happy with them at all. And, you know, there's going to come a day that they come before us looking for approval for something, and they've not been much of a corporate citizen in, with these two developments. So, and that day, and not that I'm wishing on anybody, but based on some economic factors going on, that day might be sooner than they want. So, thank.
We, we understand, appreciate very much the comment. Thank you.
Yeah, excited to have you guys in the community. I think it's going to be a great project for Livonia, so.
Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I am also excited about this project. I've been to the one in downtown Detroit and the one in Troy, I believe. Great service, great experience, and like Councilmember Jolly mentioned earlier, it's awesome to see that they are building their first, or proposing their first drive-through concepts. And we see with COVID and whatnot, drive-through has become more popular than ever. So I think it would just lead to a more successful business plan for your guys' company. This question was also asked earlier about cross-access agreements going north, and I know that's not possible. To the chair to Mr. Tormina, just a clarification, with the bank and the restaurant, will there be cross-access in between? I was trying to look at the map or the drawing, but I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, there will have to be cross-access agreements in place between the, the two parcels, and that would be a requirement at the time the, the property is, is split.
And another question this may be for Mr. Erickson. I know it's this proposed bank. Have you identified a bank that you'd like there yet, or not, not as yet?
There, we've identif, we've, yeah, through our marketing campaign, we've identified a number of users that bank, you know, financial institutions, banks, credit unions, that we think would be appropriate here, that are, are not in the market or could better their position by being in this property. And we do not have one in, under term, agreeable terms yet. So, so we're sort of leaving that to phase two of the development project. We're really focused on Shake Shack and the issues of surrounding them and what the, what the way is to, best way to get them open as soon as possible. So really sort of spending, spending our energy on that.
Just out of curiosity, with the rising cost in building, do you foresee any sort of issue with building this, these two new buildings, or you're not necessarily worried about that?
Oh, we're always worried about that. That's a, that's a, that's a great comment. No, it's, it's a real thing, for sure. And so we're very conscientious of, of the size of the buildings, the materials that are going to be used. All of, all of that goes into the soup, and so we're certainly very concerned about that as we go forward. But it's, it's a, it's a fantastic, high-profile intersection and property that deserves, you know, first-quality materials and first-quality tenants, and, you know, it's just, it's a, it's very high-profile. So I think that's, in the, in the end, in the long run, we're going to get two fantastic users at this property with, you know, the appropriate architecture and design.
I understand your concerns, and I wish you well, and I look forward to this potential project. Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Donovan. All right, anyone else? All right, do we, do we have an approving, we have an approving resolution offered, correct?
Correct. Approving for regular.
Approving for regular. All right. Very exciting project, very exciting way to wrap up the evening. Is there anything else? All right, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to communicate with the council, now is an opportunity to go to do so on any of not in this evening's agenda, going once, twice, final call, all right? And with that, we are adjourned at ten thirty-eight. All right, Livonia, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Livonia TV. Have a good evening, everybody.